We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell. Fournier.
Here.
Goodnow.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Krop.
Here.
Menzner.
Here.
Voorhees. I'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Campbell.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Campbell.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.[56.08][56.08](Laughter).
He says yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Agenda item four, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We don't have any listed, but are there any that have come in? Mr. Tingley?
No.
Okay. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion for the agenda, please.
Mayor Krop, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item six, public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we welcome comments and questions to the commission. If you would like to address the commission, we ask that if you're in person, you come to the microphone. If you are on Zoom, you raise your hand or somehow acknowledge our moderator, and he will direct us at that point. We will take comments and questions in person first. We ask that you give us your full name and you abide by our three-minute rule.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a staff attorney with the Fair Housing Center of Metropolitan Detroit. My name is Dia Mason, and I'm here primarily for an informational overview for you of what our organization can offer.
Can we have your address for the record, please?
Sure. Our address is 555 Connor Street, Detroit, Michigan, Suite 2244.
Great, go ahead.
So for over forty years, the Fair Housing Center has served the citizens, community of Mount Clemens, Michigan, in fair housing complaint intake, investigation, testing, complaint resolution. When necessary, we assist citizens in filing complaints in federal, state court, and with HUD and the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. We also are available to answer questions by residents, housing providers, city staff, and others regarding fair housing and general housing-related matters. We also have a variety of fair housing brochures informing citizens of their fair housing rights on various topics. All these services are provided free of charge. Each year, the center trains housing providers, management companies, real estate agents, brokers, private, municipal, and legal service attorneys, municipalities, tenants, and homeowners. We also engage in a variety of education and outreach activities and place fair housing advertisements in electronic print, publications, and on social media. You can visit our website at www.fairhousingdetroit.org for additional information, and we look forward to continuing to service the city of Mount Clemens and its citizens. Thank you. I've also provided some brochures for you to pass out to your constituents.
If you want to bring them to us, then we'll make sure that we have them out on display.
Thank you very much.
You want to just maybe put them over on the side there? Well, good, that's great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
For sure. Wonderful. If anyone else would like to speak at this time, they can come to the microphone. Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Ray Muscavalli, Jr. I address 180 Dickerson Street, Mount Clemens. Just here for one agenda item that I became aware of looking at Macomb Daily last night related to naming the court over by current center after the late, great Ved Green. Really just coming here to speak on behalf of that motion that's still up for debate. It definitely needs to happen. Very, very avid supporter even not knowing Ved. I mean, at that time, I was a junior in college, I think, when he passed in 2005. Upon moving here about ten years ago, I got introduced to a guy by the name of Scott Johnson who's sitting here today. He's the current president of the Macomb County Cougars, and for a lot more reasons than I have time to explain to you here today, things that Scott's doing are a direct indication of the man that Ved was, the legacy he has left on, both at the high school and throughout the city. So I definitely think if it's still up for debate, discussion, it absolutely needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we recognize Coach of Mount Clemens Basketball Team?
We'd like to recognize Coach Muscavalli from the Mount Clemens High School basketball team. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, all. As you all well know, my name is Thomas Barnes. I live at 291 Jones Street here in Mount Clemens. Few years ago, my wife and I took on the tumultuous task of trying to bring life back into the Jermaine Jackson Community Center. During the time that we were there working, we noticed in the summer months that the kids didn't like to be inside in the gym quite as frequently. Kids liked to play basketball outside. So with the help of my friends and brothers, who are sitting here with me today, a couple of really great dads by my side, decided to go outside and rehab the basketball court at the current community center. At the time we did this, the court was completely in disrepair. There was a tree growing through the middle of the basketball court. Parents didn't feel safe sending their kids there anymore. The community had just kind of written the courts off, but the kids always seen it as a meeting place, a place where they could go and hang out and just be kids without the control of adults around them telling them what to do and when to speak. Through an entire summer, these dedicated dads and myself cut down trees, cut down vines, threw away garbage. We partnered with many community organizations in the city of Mount Clemens to do the clean out of the court. And then we tried to decide what was next. One dad had the really great idea that we should paint the Bather logo on the court. At the time, if any of you know the history between what was going on with the Jermaine Jackson group and the school district, it was not well received at the time that we decided to make, to put this flag in the ground. But we pushed through because we knew what doing this would mean to the kids in our community. It would bring back a sense of pride in the school district that we knew that all of the kids loved and that they were a part of. So in their community, there's a shining light of hope. We started going around and around about what we would name the court, how we would progress with the court, how we would force people to keep the court up long-term. People told us, you know, you're doing this for no reason. Why are you doing this? And we're studying, spilling out thousands of dollars of our own money. And we had a lady from our community who was very close with Ved ask us one day, after we named the court after Tanisha, what were we going to do with Ved? What were we going to do for Ved? And befittingly, for those of you who don't know, Ved's house and his mother's house was three houses away from where the basketball court currently sits. For our community, that's sacred ground. That's where Ved first played basketball. That's where he trained. That's where he worked out at. This is a place of pride for the kids in our community, and I am so very proud of what we accomplished. Just a couple of dads and some elbow grease put together something that we can all be proud of. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Mayor. And I just want to say I'm Ved's brother.
Can you give us your name and your address?
My name is Mario Green, 3531 Waverne. And I just wanted to come up and show support for my brother because I knew firsthand what these kids in this community meant to my brother. Growing up in the projects, our lives could have took many different directions. My brother went to college at McComb College, and then he left there and went to Northeast Missouri State University, where he was drafted into the pros to go overseas and play. But when he came back home after all the things he was doing, his main objective was to come back and give these kids more hope. And him and I, you know, we took care of my mom. And my brother took so much time with these kids. All the work at home fell on me because he was taking people to Michigan State, he was taking U of M, and my brother worked with kids that he were best friends with their parents. He were relatives of some, and he really took pride in these kids, and he loved them. True enough, Mr. Thomas is a pillar. He's been fighting for everything good for this city, and I've been supporting him for whatever it is that he's trying to accomplish. And it's a great honor for you all to even consider making this basketball court named after my brother because it is a cross street from where we grew up. And when he came home from college and when he came home from playing pro ball, this is where everybody meant to play. You come over there on any given day, you see it full of people playing basketball. I mean, very competitive basketball because you got everybody coming home from college, pro ball, wherever. So it's a great honor for you guys to even consider this tribute to my brother. If he was here, he would be so pleased. My family is so pleased. I just wanted to thank you for considering this opportunity to make him a pillar of the community. My mother was even a pillar of the community. She was the first woman and the first African-American woman to be registered as an administrator in Macomb County. So we have always taken pride in what we do. Like me, I've been doing the mazines for forty years. I just did the mayor's daughter's proud just the other day.
It was my son.[723.12][723.12](Laughter).
So I thank you for choosing me and trusting me with your children, and I hope that everything was the way that everything was supposed to be. And I thank you all, and God bless you all. Again, for me and my family, we want to thank you all for this opportunity to give my brother his legacy. He earned it. He lived and he died for these kids.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time who would like to address the commission?
Carl Hay, 21 Second Street. How's everybody doing today? I've only lived here three years, but there's a name that I commonly hear because I coached basketball. I coached middle school basketball, boys and girls, in Mount Clemens, and that was Ved Green's name. And so the word I'm going to use is example. He was the correct example to our children, and the energy that he put into them and the things that he helped with in their lives. And that's why I believe it would be a great example of us to name the court after him. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Carlin Trailer. I am a former basketball player. I attended Mount Clemens High School from 2001 to 2005.
Can I stop you just for a second? Can you give us your address?
Oh, yeah.
Just for the record.
65 Miller Street, Mount Clemens.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. Ved was my basketball coach, and it would be a shame for me not to come up here because right now I don't see any other teammates, so one of us have to come up and speak on his behalf. But he was a pillar in our community. He was an example. He picked us up and dropped us off to and from practice. He made sure that we got to games on time. We would have to get up at six o'clock in the morning to work out. He was a father to me. He was an example. He was a leader. He was everything you would want to see in a man, and I'm thankful for Ved being in my life. I'm now thirty-three years old. I own a restaurant called Slaw Dogs, and his picture's in my restaurant. Himself and Al Snyder, they were two great examples. But I just thank Ved for everything he's ever done for me. I had a wonderful, awesome father, but Ved was definitely my second father. He taught me to be respectful. He taught me to be on time. He taught me to have discipline, and he was disciplined himself. He was responsible. He never shamed us as our basketball coach. And I just want to say that I love him, and I am honored and privileged to see his name on that court. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Scott Johnson, president of, currently the president of Macomb County Cougars. Address 52832 Turnberry Drive, Chesterfield, Michigan. Listening to everybody today is bringing back memories because I'm one of those people that Ved saved. I wasn't a troubled kid, but I was a lost kid as far as not knowing what to do once high school was over and dreams of playing basketball and things like that didn't kind of materialize. But he saw something in me, what, '99, '98, that brought me into coaching because I'd never had a desire to coach. I never had a desire to even run a program. But he would always be honest as far as the vision, as far as helping your community, giving back what you've been taught, and delivering that message, and he was the connector. I'm from Fifteen Mile and Gratchit, which is Clint Dells District, rifle district, and he handpicked me to run a program out of Mount Clemens. Back during those times, that was kind of unheard of because of the competition.
The rivalry.
Exactly. The rivalry. So to sit here, and I mean, almost every year you hear something about him. His memory is constantly gone. And I'm talking about connecting high schools, coaches within high schools. It's amazing to see his vision and fortitude to see it pass because we've served over 2,000, 3,000 kids. We have kids all over the United States, some in Europe. We have professional players, and these are homegrown kids from right in the community. So my goal, to take my last breath, is to continue that legacy and to carry it forward, and hopefully we get community kids more involved and stuff like that. Thank you for having me.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay.
They know me as Jackie Mays. My address is 15352 Collison, and that's in East Point. I am a product of Mount Clemens. I grew up as a little girl on 85 Orchard. Ved, he has been my godfather since the age of four years old. During that time, my mother and my father, they struggled. They encountered financial struggles. So Ved, at the time when he was married, him and his wife took me in. They took care of me. They instilled great, a great deal of morals and values within me. One thing that sticks with me with Ved is he was structured. There had to be structure. There had to be consistency. He wouldn't allow us to settle. My grades had to be on point, or he was coming for me. But I truly thank God for him and my godmother being in my life. He taught me, you know, just morals and values of how to carry myself as a young lady. You know, just inspired me to go to college. I'm now a preschool teacher. I enjoy what I do. He gave me that drive of being able to help somebody else, knowing what it's like to be selfless. Like, God gave us these natural born abilities, and he just instilled in me to share it with other people and not to always think about myself. I need, I want, be there for someone else. So this is, I feel, is a great opportunity for him to be honored. When I say this man was selfless, he would come and pick me up for basketball practice. Lord knows I didn't want to play basketball, but he made it his business to get me to practice, buy me my uniforms, buy me my basketball shoes, and I tried to make him proud the best way I could, but it was just not my thing. But I thank God for him. I thank God that his legacy will continue on, and I just want to say thank you to everyone that took the time to come out and just to honor him. He is a true, true man, and he is a man of his word, and may he rest in peace, and may his legacy live on. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have one more? Okay. I'm sorry. Jean Dixon. Oh, okay. Jean Dixon?
My name is Jean Dixon.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Hi, my name is Jean Dixon. I live at 114 Mead Street, Mount Clemens. I just want to say, as for Ved, Ved was a great pillar in the Mount Clemens area. And I say all the time, and you know me, I say, once a Bather, always a Bather. And Ved, when he came back, he took our girls, and he made them famous. He took them, he honored them, he put them out there, he worked them hard, he cared for them. So this is a great honor for Ved, and I believe his legacy will continue on in these young girls. But naming that court after him is definitely a good thing for our community, and our children definitely will appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else via Zoom? No. Okay. All right. We'll move on then to administrative responses to issues or questions. Do we have anything at this time, Mr. Tingley?
Not this evening, no.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion?
I move to approve the work session and regular city commission city meeting minutes for September 20th, 2021.
Support. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Agenda item 9A, audit engagement letter. I'll entertain a motion?
I move the 2019-2020 engagement letter for Plant and Moran to conduct the audit of the financial records of the city of Mount Clemens. Be approved, and the city manager is authorized to sign it.
I think they want to, those dates have to be changed. They're an error. I think it's 2021-2022.
No. It would be 2020-2021, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
So the following year.
Oh, okay, for this.
Yeah, it would be last year's fiscal year, right? Do you want to remove?
I move the 2020 and 2021 engagement letter for Plant and Moran to conduct the audit of the financial records of the city of Mount Clemens. Be approved, and the city manager authorized to sign it.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Tingley.
Attached is the engagement letter from Plant and Moran for the 2020-2021 audit. No other comments at this time.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Tingley?
I had one. Do you remember, you may not, since it wouldn't have been your area?
Mr. Johnson is on Zoom, so if we need him.
What the audit was last year?
I believe it's in, it's very similar. I think it might have been a slight increase from last year's.
Patrick, is Mr. Johnson raising his hand? Let's hear his.
Am I on line?
Yes, you are.
I do not have that number available with me, but this has not changed significantly.
Okay.
If I recall, I believe it was, it might have been $60,000.
I thought this was an increase.
Yeah, I think it's a slight, slight increase.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? And is everybody clear that this is just to give approval to begin the audit? Right? Okay. Excellent. Roll call, please.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to the sheriff contract renewal. I will entertain a motion?
I move to approve the agreement with the Macomb County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services and the Intergovernmental Agreement for Regional Emergency Dispatch Services covering the period of January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2024.
Support.
Mr. Tingley?
The city's agreement with the Macomb County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services and the Intergovernmental Agreement for Regional Emergency Dispatch Services expires December 31st. The sheriff's office is requesting that the city commission approve the attached three-year agreements, which cover the time period starting January 1, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2024. The dispatch agreement contains no changes from our current agreement except for dates. The law enforcement agreement has two changes. One, it specifies the city is responsible for repair and maintenance of the City Hall substation. Two, it extends the notice requirement for early cancellation of the agreement from three months to six months. The city administration has no objection to either change. The following page contains a cost breakdown for services provided by these agreements. These include the costs associated with one sergeant, sixteen deputies, 4.2 dispatchers, and six vehicles. Overhead and ancillary expenses include other supervisor costs, liability insurance, equipment purchases, and supplies. Vehicle expenses include the purchase of new vehicles, maintenance, and gas. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Menzner?
So I don't know if anybody saw the article in Sunday's Macomb Daily about public trust with our police service agencies, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things here for the sheriff department. In June of 2020, President Trump signed an executive order on "safe policing for safe communities," and this was after the George Floyd...
Incident.
I don't know what to call it. Incident? Okay. So the Macomb County Sheriff's Department is in full compliance with that executive order. Training policies, and that order says that training policies must be upheld and monitored by the state, including training on use of force and de-escalation techniques. It includes performance management tools such as early warning systems to help identify officers who require intervention. It involves best practices regarding community engagement. Sheriff Wickersham issued a new policy on the officer's duty to intervene. You'll remember that that was a problem in the George Floyd murder incident, what have you. And he's also clarifying the policy stating chokeholds may no longer be used by the Macomb County Sheriff's Department. In addition, the sheriff department has started a Critical Incident Stress Management Team, which is being overseen by our old substation commander, who is now Lieutenant Gillespie. He was a sergeant when he was with us. This team started in March of 2021, and it consists of 25 people, including patrol deputies, dispatchers, correction officers, and command officers. As you can imagine, there are hundreds of traumatic incidences that these officers deal with daily in Macomb County and in our city. Abused children, sexual assaults, horrific car injury accidents, suicides, murders, drownings, et cetera. These all bring stress on an officer, and so this team, the Critical Incident Stress Management Team, is going to work with these officers to make sure that they are fit for duty. So I think that this is a very positive step for the sheriff department, and I think that it's going to bring a better relationship between the officers and our community.
I would just point out one thing. The report indicates that one of the changes was to extend the notice requirement for early cancellation of the agreement from three months to six months. I would just point out that that was always the termination, number of months, six months. It was the last contract that had a change down to three months. And so I think they caught that and changed it at this time. Obviously, if it were ever terminated, it'd be impossible to develop a police force in ninety days. But I just wanted to clarify that. I think in the last contract, they inadvertently changed it, and now they put it back.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about the contract? Hearing none, roll call, please. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Okay, agenda item 9C, Resolution for Ved Green.
I move to adopt the resolution honoring Mount Clemens Girls Basketball Coach Ved Green and naming the basketball court at the Kearns Community Center, the Ved Green Memorial Basketball Courts.
Support.
Mr. Tingley.
Thank you. The basketball courts at the Kearns Community Center have been unofficially called the Ved Green Memorial Basketball Courts since they were refurbished. That occurred when the park and the building were under school district control. Since this facility is now under city control, we would like to honor the late coach and make the name official by adopting the attached resolution.
Whereas, Mount Clemens resident Ved Green was a talented basketball player and beloved coach in our community. His dedication to youth was demonstrated through his role of coach for the Mount Clemens Girls Basketball Team from 1990 until his death in 2001. Ved was a celebrated leader who took the team to seven district championships, one regional title, and five Macomb Area Conference Crowns. Coach Green was officially honored for his coaching excellence when he was named Free Press All East Coach of the Year in 1999. And whereas, in 1995, Ved co-founded the Macomb County Cougars, a summer recreation team designed to keep at-risk young women focused on a common goal while learning the fundamentals of basketball. And whereas, since its inception, Ved's Macomb County Cougars have positively impacted the lives of over 3,000 kids. Hundreds of these young players have also been recipients of athletic scholarships because of Ved's intervention, thereby improving their lives to the better. And whereas, Ved Green will always be remembered for inspiring and shaping the lives of countless students, athletes, while sharing his love for the game of basketball. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Mount Clemens City Commission, on this date, October 4, 2024, sorry, 2021, declare that the basketball courts at the Kearns Community Center be named the Ved Green Memorial Basketball Courts on this, the 20th anniversary of his passing, and in remembrance of the valuable contributions that he made to our community. That is, if passed, the resolution. Is there anyone who has comments or questions at this point? Commissioner Menzer.
I think I can speak for the entire commission that we are pleased and humbled to honor such a beloved and important member of our community.
As you can see from the outpour on Zoom and at the city commission meeting tonight, that Ved was a great athlete, coach, mentor, and pillar in this community. And it's an honor that we're able to, if passed, dedicate the court to him.
I don't think there is anything else I could say that would... I did meet him one time, but that would even compare to the tribute that he's given him tonight, and I'm sure he would be extraordinarily proud and happy to have you all here. The legacy is living on in you. The basketball courts will be great to have his name, but the real legacy is living on you.
I think members of the community like Ved. I've never had the pleasure of meeting Ved, but members of the community that extend themselves to be, to give back to the community and to really live the life of service to others. I mean, this is probably the most... I think this is the best part of our job, right, is recognizing those people because they are the unsung heroes of our community. They're the people that save people like any of us. I mean, I know I was a kid who didn't have role models until people who were not in my family stepped up and showed me that there was a better way, right? And I think most of us and all of us have a time in our life when that was significant. So people like Ved deserve honors like this. And so it's with great honor and with great pleasure that we get to do this today. So let's... Would anyone else like to?
I would just like to say that as an alumni of Mount Clemens High School, I am so proud that we are able to do this for someone who touched so many students at that school. And once again, once a Bather, always a Bather.
If I could just add just a little bit, I'd like to say that Mr. Green was an extraordinary human being. Played a huge part in my son's life, as well as his brother and Ms. Green. I used to work with Ms. Green and the entire family. If you look in the dictionary, it would say leadership, that would be the Green family. Thank you.
Well, with great honor, I will say, call the roll, please.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
The resolution passes. Thank you all. All right, and thank you to Ved's family for being here today. We appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to General Business 9B, Purchases and Payments of Invoices.
I move to approve purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
I was waiting for Ron.
I know, yeah. Do we have a support? I'm sorry.
Support.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Menzer? Okay. All right, call the roll, please.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Agenda item 10, Consent.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Or... Support.
Roll call, please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting that gives the opportunity for a second... Sorry, city manager report. I was jumping the gun. Go ahead, Mr. Tingley, sorry about that.
Thank you. The Mount Clemens 2021 State of the City address is now available online at the Bass City Beat YouTube channel, and there's also a link on the homepage of the city website. A few upcoming DDA events, the Halloween Spooktacular will be on Saturday, October 23rd, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Fountain Stage in Alamo Com place. And there will also be a trunk or treat on October 23rd from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Roscoe parking lot next to the Anton Art Center. The annual fire department open house will be October 24th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. This will feature an equipment display, extraction demonstrations, a junior firefighter combat challenge, face painting, hot dogs, cider, donuts, and popcorn. And then included here again is information linked to COVID data, as well as future agenda items. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Tingley? Yes, Commissioner Menzer.
I would like to see the special work session on discussing the ARPA funds moved from a work session to the regular agenda, so that the public can see what we're talking about.
I believe we can have that done with submitting that as an official request with another signature of a commissioner.
I shouldn't have to have that done.
Well, that's our procedure. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Tingley? Okay, we'll move on to, this is the portion of the meeting for the second opportunity for the public to address the commission at this time. All that we ask is that you abide by our two-minute rule and then give us your first, sorry, your full name and your address. Anyone like to... We'll first go to the in-person people. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission.
Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street, Mount Clemens. As you heard from the outpouring of support from our community, Ved lived the life of service, so much so that for those of you who are unfamiliar with the story, Ved passed while chaperoning the 2001 Homecoming Dance at Mount Clemens High School. This week is homecoming at Mount Clemens. And how much better of a way, no matter how we feel, no matter what our thoughts are, how much better of a way for us to honor Ved than for everybody to take time out of your day and out of your week to go to the game on Friday at 7:00 and support the kids in our community. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
Carl Hayes, 21 Second Street. Tomorrow, we have kickball over at Joy Park through Sportport, and on Thursday at 6:00 over in Shadyside, we have kickball. If anybody wants to come out, it's both children and adults. We have a really good time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in person? Anybody else on Zoom? Okay.
Hello again, this is Jean Dixon, 114 Needle Street. I just want to tell the commission, thank you so much. We're honoring our wishes for Ved. I didn't say before, and Tommy kind of brought it up, that with Ved coming back and his brother, with Ved coming back, it's what we want as Mount Clemens residents, for our children to grow up and to come back and to do and share what they've learned and bring it back to Mount Clemens. So I appreciate you doing what you did to honor Ved. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on Zoom? Okay, all right, we'll move over to Commissioner comments then. Commissioner Goodnow.
So with the uprising of the COVID, if anyone is in need of masks, please call me, contact me, email me, whatever, especially our seniors, our disabled people, families in need. Also, if you have children who need blankets, I have partnered with Project Linus. They will be giving out free blankets, so if you know of any families that are in need of that, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes, I just, thank you, Mayor Crapp. I just have a couple of shout-outs tonight. The first is to the Kiwanis Club of Mount Clemens, who is celebrating their 100th anniversary. This club has given many scholarships to deserving students who live in Mount Clemens and have helped many needy families and those who are fostering children. My second shout-out is to Sandy and Mike Patrick, both graduates of Mount Clemens High School. They are the owners of the Mount Clemens Dairy Queen on North Grashitton High Street. This is their 27th year. September 30th is always the saddest day of the year for me because that's the day they close for the season. However, I always look forward to the spring opening day. Best wishes to Sandy and Mike. And with that, I'm going to have two things. Once a Bather, always a Bather. Once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzer.
So I attended the Lady Bathers' Basketball Game last Tuesday, and I want to tell you how proud I was of our football team. The entire football team came out in support of the volleyball team, of the Lady Bathers' volleyball team. They sat there in the stands, and they cheered, and they stopped, and they shouted encouragement, and they had a great time. I was so proud of them for doing that. It was really, it was really just really cool. As Mr. Barnes already said, the homecoming game is this Friday at 7:00. If you go to any game, go to the homecoming game. Show these kids your support. Make badly lettered signs, like I have been known to do. Just go there and cheer them. It's really important to show them our support. And you know what? They're on a winning schedule right now. They're close. We cheer them on, they could win this championship, so let's show up at the game in support. And I believe firmly that on the commission, it is our responsibility to promote the businesses in town, in our city. So here are the places I've been for just the last month. I went back to Forest Financial Coaching, which is on North Main over by the post office, because I apparently need some help getting my finances straight and saving for retirement. They will help you too. Octopus's Garden, they have a great band on Thursday. They are still open right now. They have, they are serving lunch. I've been to the Rec Ball. I have been to Pollyanna's Antiques over there on North Avenue and Lenore Street. Great little shop, lots of stuff. You can't walk out without buying something. I've been to Orleans. I've been to Paperback Writers in Weirdsville. I've been to Three Blind Mice and enjoyed their patio and their redesigned exterior. And again, I went to Cass Collision after I got rear-ended on Cass Avenue. And they're having supply chain issues and are unable, after three weeks now, to come up with the parts to fix my car. So, but those are the businesses in town that in the last month I have been to personally and supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. It's an honor to be part of the city commission and be able to honor the Ved Green Basketball Court at Kearns. I also want to thank TCB Youth Mentor Carl and everyone that worked with him to refurbish that court. I believe the artist Mary Klein's Diver, who worked hard with the design in the court, helping design the court and also painting it with everyone else's help. Also, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and according to the Susan G. Komen Organization, one in eight women in the U.S. will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. With that said, regular self-breast exams and screenings are highly important because early detection saves lives. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Yes, I want to echo everyone that, again, very, very proud to be able to be part of naming this basketball court after Ved Green. And we have to make sure, and I will make sure, that we get some sort of plaque up there that, so that it's there to remember him by and to remind all of us what it's like to give back and to be part of this community. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who participated in the Cascade in the Shade groundbreaking last weekend. That was a very wet event. The splash pad was not built yet, but Mother Nature made sure that we experienced what it would be like to be in a splash pad at that time with torrential downpours. So, but we all persevered, and it was a great event. And also, I'd like to thank Advancing Macomb for their work on helping us raise money for that fun, for that really exciting initiative that's coming to Shadyside Park. Everyone who helped with Meet Me at the Trail with the Macomb County Department of Economic, yeah, Economic Development and Planning. We really, Mount Clemens had so much going on that day that I think they thought it was a Mount Clemens event. So we were well-represented, and I appreciate all of the organizations that came out and helped with that, despite the weather, but it did improve. Yeah, it did improve, so that was good. I too have enjoyed kickball, and I know that the community as well. So take up the opportunity before the weather changes and we're all forced inside, to make sure you get out to Joy Park and to Shadyside Park. You said Tuesday and Thursday, Tommy? Excellent, yeah. So make sure you get out there and enjoy those recreation opportunities. If you are experiencing flooding when there is tons of rain, like it has been this summer, we, as a city, if we get reports of flooding, we can then report it with the county and with the state. And sometimes, they declare states of emergency. If we don't get reports of it, then we can't make, we can't tag along, and we can't add to those reports. And so it's really important, we might not be able to help immediately with that flooding issue, but we need that information in order to help with getting it declared a state of emergency. So if you have any incidences of flooding due to weather, I just want to make that clear, due to weather, please call our city manager's office, right? Should we do that?
Either that or the fire department.
Okay, so either... Okay, so either, either number is fine, but I would, I would just behoove you to all make sure that you're reporting that, so that way we can get the funds if they are available. And then also, I would like to thank everyone who sponsored and attended the State of the City address. And also, if you sat down for forty-five minutes in front of your computer and watched it on YouTube. So I appreciate everyone who came out and supported the city for that, and it's, it was an honor to be able to, to be able to give that speech, and so I really appreciate the support of that. Oh, and one last thought, at the end of the State of the City, I challenged everyone to forward. And so while maybe you can't give a huge amount of time to some, some big commitment, those little pieces add up to making a huge impact in this city. I was driving down Cass Avenue and noticed that Crane Alignment is painting their building, and it looks great. And everybody who's driving down Cass Avenue is going to notice that. All those little things add up. So be a part of the solution, be a part of the team, and be a part of moving Mount Clemens forward. So I give you that challenge as I gave at the end of the State of the City. And with that, I will move to adjourn tonight's meeting. I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion, since I can't move.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.